Good evening, I'll call to order the Arvada City Council Workshop for March 22nd, 2021, and call upon Kristen Rush to do a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Perotan Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Piper.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Mr. Marriott, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we excuse Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones indicated he would not be available tonight. Mr. Piper, can you hear us? Now you can.
I can now.
Okay, very good. How do you vote on the motion to excuse Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Okay. All other votes? Did you all vote? Vote again. That passes six to zero, Mr. Jones is excused. Okay, Mr. Devon, we have two workshops tonight, I'll let you get us started.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're going to first present the Housing Strategies Update, and we will be hearing from Housing Manager Carrie Espinosa, and I might mention that it is Carrie's 10th anniversary here in the city of Arvada. She started just a little bit before I did, in 2011, and I've been informed by people that work with her that this is the longest she's ever stayed at one agency, and she's just thrilled to be here. So Carrie, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, and yes, my 10-year anniversary today, and I couldn't think of a better way to spend it, so...
You should be, have your head examined. But congratulations, and thank you for your good work.
Well, thank you very much. So I am here this evening to provide an update on the housing strategy. It's been a while since we last met. If we could go to the next slide, please. So... So here's an agenda of what we're going to cover this evening. First, I will give a brief overview of what we've accomplished up to this point. Next, I will review the results of a community engagement survey that took place back in December. From there, we'll move on to reviewing the recommended strategies provided by Root Policy Research to incentivize affordable housing preservation and development. And then finally, we would like to turn it over to council to provide feedback on each of the strategies. Next slide, please. So a brief background, the housing strategy that we're working on, it aligns with the city council's strategic result that by December of 2021, we will implement a toolkit of housing mix and style plans to improve access to quality housing affordable for a broad range of income levels. And in order to create a housing strategy, we first needed to understand the current state of affordable housing in Arvada, so it was determined that we needed to complete a housing needs assessment. And the purpose of that assessment was to develop a comprehensive understanding of the characteristics and dynamics of housing in Arvada, with the goal to achieve future housing diversity and to develop policies aligned with functional strategies that provide clear outcomes for Arvada. Root Policy Research was the firm that was hired to complete the housing assessment, and Root presented the results of that assessment at the October 26, 2020 City Council Workshop. Next slide, please. During that workshop, Root Policy Research reviewed the top three housing needs in Arvada, and those needs are additional affordable rentals specifically for residents earning less than $35,000, increased diversity in housing stock with a focus on missing middle ownership options and product types attractive to seniors, and starter homes and family homes priced near or below $300,000. Next slide, please. And also during the workshop, Root Policy reviewed recommended strategies or tools that the city could use to address the housing needs. Root identified approximately 16 strategies overall, and all of those strategies can be found in the full report. That list of 16 was prioritized and narrowed down to six strategies to provide some focus and guide our work. Those six recommended strategies are to leverage existing resources to facilitate affordable housing development, establish a local funding source for housing by collecting linkage fees from developers, establish a committee to implement the city's Affordable Housing Action Plan, and support affordable housing development, implement a foreclosure eviction prevention program, allocate publicly owned land, and/or acquire vacant or underutilized properties for affordable and mixed-income housing, and to incorporate additional development incentives into the city's land development code. Next slide, please. So that's a brief review of why we're working on the housing strategy and the results of the housing needs assessment. So from here, I'm going to move into our community engagement effort. At the October workshop presentation, we shared that the next steps would be to complete some community engagement. We wanted to see what the community thought of the two big takeaways from the housing assessment, which were those top three housing needs that we just reviewed, as well as the six recommended strategies. We use Speak Up Arvada as the platform for the engagement. The Speak Up Arvada page, it launched on December 3rd of 2020. It was active for three weeks. There were 177 participants who completed the survey, and 11 participated in the Stories Tool that was offered to share either their own personal stories regarding their need for housing, or they offered some additional feedback of what they would like to see in the strategy. Next slide, please. So diving a little bit deeper into those survey questions, there were a total of three questions. The first question being, when thinking about living in Arvada and looking for quality housing, which of the following represents the greatest gap? And we asked that question to ask because it was related to the top three housing needs. The second question was out of the following six priority strategies from the housing assessment, which actions do you feel will have the greatest impact? And then the third question was asking what city council district does the resident live in? Next slide, please. Now, let's look at the responses to those questions. To the first question regarding looking for affordable housing, which of the following represents the greatest gap? Almost 50% of the respondents answered that starter homes and family homes priced near or below $300,000 is the greatest gap. Just over 30% of respondents answered that more diverse housing choices that focus on missing middle ownership options and product types attractive to aging seniors was the biggest need, and 20% answered that affordable housing rent, affordable rentals was the greatest gap.
Carrie?
Yes.
What was the number of subjects surveyed or that gave their comments?
177.
177, thank you.
You're welcome. The second question out of the six priority strategies from the housing assessment, which actions do you feel will have the greatest impact? And for this question, they could answer, they could provide or rate their top three answers. The strategy that received the most votes was the strategy to leverage existing resources to facilitate affordable housing development. That was followed by establishing a local funding source for housing by collecting linkage fees from developers, and then rounding out the top three was to establish a committee to implement the city's Affordable Housing Action Plan and support affordable housing development. Next slide, please. And then the final survey question was regarding their city council district. As you can see, the participation was pretty even across all four districts, which is good to see. District four had slightly higher participation, but again, it was very close between the districts.
I would respectfully submit that you really shouldn't tie council member names to the districts. I've got, you know, the fact that you've got two at-large council members and the mayor, and I've got Mark McGough in my ear right now saying, you know, once you're elected to council, you represent the entire city. You don't just represent a district. So let's take out the council member names as it pertains to these kind of presentations.
Okay, will do.
Great.
Thank you.
And I'm sure Mark McGough is watching tonight and thanking me for bringing that up.
Yes.
Because he watches us frequently.
Thank you for the feedback. Any questions regarding the survey before we move on?
And Bob and Nancy, just jump in whenever you want, and others can as well, or push your buttons either way. I think we're good for now, keep going.
Okay. So moving on to the next steps. So what do we know up to this point? We know what the housing needs are in the community. We know the strategies or tools that could be used to meet the needs, and we know how the community would prioritize those recommendations. What is needed at this point is to define the city's housing goals, create policies in order to meet those goals, and create measurements and timelines for meeting those goals. So the next step for us at this point is to create what's being referred to as the Housing Action Plan, to serve as a policy guide and to assist with decision-making and enhancing our communication with developers and others related to affordable housing. The action plan will be developed around the top three housing needs and the six strategy recommendations. So at this point, the Housing Action Plan is really going to be our focus moving forward. Next slide, please. So I'm taking us back to the six recommendations that were made by Root Policy Research. These recommendations are a mix of strategies, and some can be researched and implemented fairly quickly, while others will require more extensive research and planning, and really just to flesh it out to see how this strategy would work best in Arvada. So I would like to review each one in more detail and to gather your feedback as we prepare to dive deeper into each of these strategies in order to incorporate it into the action plan. So the first strategy is the Housing Advisory Committee. And a housing advisory committee would serve to study and spearhead housing policies. Tasks that could be assigned to a housing advisory committee is to advise the city council and the city manager on housing issues, strategies, goals, and policies. It can also be tasked with recommending long- and short-range goals, funding priorities of programs to address recognized housing needs, and I won't review the whole list of tasks with you there. There are a number of communities throughout the metro area that have a housing advisory committee of some sort. They all look a little bit different, so, and some have been in place for a number of years now. There are a number of benefits to a housing advisory committee, including studying and monitoring action items. To complete the Housing Action Plan, the committee could represent the action plan to neighborhoods and residents. This strategy receives strong support from the community in that community survey tool, and it's highly, highly supported by city staff as well.
Mr. Marriott.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Espinosa. I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions just about this particular recommendation. So I want to go back, just briefly back to the survey that 177 people answered, and want to know, on that survey, was there any kind of ability to answer in the negative? In other words, could you take the survey and say, "I don't think Arvada has a housing problem"? Was that a possible response to a question?
No.
Okay. And that's okay, but was there, was there a way of, you know, for people who took the survey, was there a way of expressing satisfaction with the status quo?
There, there were some people who, if they couldn't express their answers completely in the questions themselves, they took the opportunity to do so in that Stories Tool, and they expressed a variety of, we received a variety of feedback in that Stories Tool. So if somebody felt like there wasn't a housing issue in Arvada, they could express it there, and like I said, there were a variety of responses that we received.
Okay. And, but there was only a small number that used that story thing, 12 or something like that, or?
Eleven, yes.
Eleven, yeah. So, so what, less than 10%, 6% or something was all that, that answered anything outside of the bounds of the specific questions that were asked in the survey?
That's correct.
Okay. So the question I would have is, if we're going to use that survey to kind of direct policy here, how would we ever try to get a broader, kind of a broader view of what people think? I mean, obviously, the people who are, you know, community housing policy enthusiasts or affordable housing enthusiasts are certainly going to participate in a survey like this, but how about the people who, you know, kind of sit opposite from that? How do we ever get responses from them and their input on what we should be doing here?
Yeah, it's a good question. And as we move forward with the action plan of looking forward to future community engagement, one of the things that we would like to do is not limited to the Speak Up Arvada Tool itself. At that point, hopefully, we can get out there in the community and do some more engagement, which would allow people to voice their opinions and not just have it limited to a survey question.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to get a couple of answers to that before I delve into this Housing Advisory Committee a little bit. So if you're talking about putting together a committee to advise the city council and city manager on housing issues, strategies, goals, and policies, what kind, who would you, who would be valuable to be on something like that? Who would you place on that committee?
Yeah, another great question. And I think that that's something that we would have to discuss further, but there are people in the community who do have development experience, who are, have real estate experience, people who, people who are in need of affordable housing themselves would, would serve well on this committee. So I think it's a matter of the city team really sitting down and talking about who would best serve on this committee, but those are my initial thoughts.
Right. Do you think on a committee like that, there should be some people who are maybe contrarians a little bit, who might say, "Actually, I'm pretty good with the status quo, I don't really think we should be doing anything"? Would that be a valuable perspective on a community committee like that?
I think it's, it's good to get all perspectives. I think it's something that we could consider as we look at establishing this committee.
Okay. So let me ask you another question. As I read through the material, and we'll get to this, down, down the road, there's, you know, one of the answers that scored high was linkage fees to development to provide funding for, for affordable housing, and how do you get, you know, an advisory committee to not just be a political advocacy committee? How would you do, I mean, how do you, obviously, if we put this committee together and populate it with people, somebody's going to have to then manage those people, and, you know, is it, number one, is the goal to just make them a political advocacy committee? Or two, is there, is the goal to be something different? And how do you keep it from being that? How would you keep it from just being a committee that advocates for one certain set of prescriptions?
Yeah, and I think it goes back to really, as, as we start to look at defining what this committee is, is determining those, what the mission is, and clearly defining that role for people, and having staff involved in that committee who can, who can manage that, and if need be, point the committee back on the task at hand rather than it becoming political. It's, again, re, just revisiting what the core mission is of that group.
And Councilmember Marriott, this is Gordon Rusink, and I'd like to add to that in that the best committees are those that are reflective of the community's perspective, as you mentioned. And where we've always had such a good, robust conversation is when the committee is advisory to the city council and the city staff, but it's also appointed by the city council. So in our minds, we were seeing this committee, perhaps as we've treated the park advisory committee and our other advisory committees, as reflective of the city council in the robust interview process that you all do, but then being key members in it, with the day-to-day folk, or, you know, advisory focus on the subject of affordable housing. And to that end, one of the things that Carrie and I've looked at is, is this another committee that could be council-appointed that would be staffed by our team, just as we do the other council-appointed committees? And the answer to that question is yes. We're prepared to staff a committee like that.
Okay, thanks. Do you, do you guys both, Gordon, you and Carrie both envision this as being a committee for, you know, a specific time and a specific task, or is this an open-ended, from now till they serve no, no further purpose? Or what, what do you envision as something like this?
I think we have examples in the city of both, where a committee has been formed that's reflective of the community, that's been given a specific, specific job to do and a timeline in which to do it. And then we have other committees that are more open-ended, that are tied back to the long-term implementation of plans that have been adopted by city council. So I think that's a question that we could frame, but we would want to have additional policy conversations with the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Gordon, one that I have on this would be that, you know, if this is a direction we decide we should go, you know, we may want to get some subject matter experts, you know, so we may want some designated spots on this committee for people, you know, like from the Apartment Association, or, yeah, there's a guy named Mark Williams, who's not me, that heads the Apartment Association, who would be, he or a designee, perhaps from the Realtors, you know, but again, we've got a lot of, you know, I know we've got a lot of citizens that are well-intentioned, that would certainly give us good input, but I think we need some subject matter experts on this as well. Okay, no other questions at this point, so if you want to keep going on with your presentation?
Well, I actually did, I'm sorry, Mayor, I thought you were going to go to each of us. I did want to ask you, Carrie, one of, or maybe I wanted to comment, one of the things that I was thinking about that I would like to see a housing committee, a housing advisory committee do, would be to look at, you know, what is our current inventory? What are we adding with the developments that we're adding? I did a little research just for my own edification, and I looked at the 2019 income distribution of Arvada, and it was interesting to me that as I looked at that income distribution, I saw that the top two income categories increased over 2017. The middle one, $52,999,999, decreased, as did the 25K to $49,999. And then there was an increase in the $25,000 to, excuse me, under $25,000, that was 12%. And then I looked at, you know, in those categories, what would be the amount of rent that would be exactly at 30%? And so, first of all, I'm looking at the 12%, the under $25,000, and I'm seeing that there, in that category, you're looking at 625. And I know there's probably, unless someone is on affordable housing with credits, right, there's no rent to be found at 625. So I would kind of like to see, you know, and that may be a simplistic look, because obviously, people migrate out of the city, we have people migrating in, so that income distribution is going to be constantly changing. But I also think that with the development that we're currently doing, and I think this is where it helps to have some kind of advisory committee or somebody overseeing this, just like with water, you know, as we bring on new developments, you know, how is, how does our water look? Same thing. And I would just like to make a comment that one of the struggles that I have in this as well is that when I look at the $25,000 to $49,999 category, that, that is like around $1,250 in rent. And I'm thinking, I know of a particular person right now who is, works for a grocery store here in Arvada. She is paying currently $1,500 in rent in a complex that is generally affordable housing, and she has not been able to make her rent. So that tells me that we don't have enough housing for our workers. So going back to vision, I like vision. I'm trying to figure out, as a city, what is our vision when it comes to providing housing? Because as a city council member, over the last six years, I've seen a tremendous increase in your so-called market-rate apartments, but again, when I look at the incomes required for those market-rate apartments, we're talking, you know, $1,250 at the $50,000 level, right? So, and that's our, that's our big category. 32% are in that $50,000 to $99,999. So we're, we're, we're really capturing some in that category, but our real high-end is definitely in the 100 and above category. So we're going to be also changing our distribution simply So, we're gonna be also changing our distribution, simply by what's affordable in our VADA. So all that said, is, is anybody paying attention to how many units we have in our VADA, for our income distribution here in our VADA? Because, and maybe I'm wrong, but I'm assuming that if, if we have an equivalent distribution of housing to our income distribution, we don't have a problem. Is that correct?
I don't know, who's supposed to answer that? I don't, I don't know.
Carrie is, is who I'm asking it to, but...
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, I hear what you're saying, and, and, and I would agree with that. I think it's something that we do need to take a look at, and revisiting the assessment that the, that Root Policy Research completed on the, the assessment. I'm not sure that it, it went that far into the distribution, I would have to revisit that. But I, going back to your point regarding vision, I, I agree that that is key to the work that we're doing here, is establishing the vision and direction of where we want to go.
Okay, others with questions at this point? Nope? Well, then, let's keep moving.
So, next slide, please. The next strategy is recommendation for land development code incentives. Our VADA updated its land development code in 2020 to include a number of updates, such as a hype bonus, fast track review, and modification opportunities for affordable housing development. But additional incentives that we may consider are waiving or reducing development fees for affordable housing development, waiving rezone requirements for developments with deep affordability, and for the city to utilize programs, or grant programs such as CDBG, or other resources to fund off-site infrastructure that a development may need in order, or may need in return for commitment to provide affordable housing units. As part of this strategy, the city could create a policy as to identify what development fees the city would consider waiving, and in what situations the city would consider those waivers. This is a strategy that we do need to do some further research on before we, before creating any sort of policy. So something that, that we will be looking further into, to see how it would work best for our VADA. But at this point, is there any feedback regarding this strategy?
Marriott? Yeah, Carrie, I'll just give you a comment. So, you know, waiving or reducing development fees for affordable housing development, I think is, maybe sounds better than it is, it's, it's subsidizing housing, but extracting the subsidy out of the rest of the developments that do pay the fees. In other words, the costs associated get split over fewer units, or people, or developments, or however you want to coach it, in, meaning it's more expensive for those who don't get them waived, than those who do get them waived. So, I'd be really careful with that one. I would also want to make sure that that's something that the city council has, would have a, a hand in any of those individually. That, that that's not just a staff-driven decision, where the staff can decide, okay, we'll waive fees for this development, but not for this one, or we'll waive some of them for this one, but all of them for that one. That those are really much more community conversations, and, and that the city council ought to be, ought to be the one that makes those decisions. So that's number one. The other one, then, that you have on here is waiving rezoning requirements. Again, I would be very careful with that. You know, the rezoning and what gets built where is oftentimes one of the most contentious things we see. We get lots of input on all these things. And I think all that input makes the product that ends up there better. And again, I, I don't think it's fair to the residents or to the staff for that to be just a staff decision. I, I, I think those are decisions that have to come through the city council. So waiving rezoning requirements, I don't think is, is appropriate at all, because I, I can see a neighborhood who, 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 you know, some developer develops affordable housing and gets to waive the, the requirements, and those, those people who are interested in it, in it both positively and negatively, should have the political opportunity to weigh in on those things. And I think if, if it can just be waived administratively, I think they lose that, and I think that's an important thing. So, I, I would, I'd be really careful about those. And then, you know, when it comes to utilizing CDBG to do off-site infrastructure, you know, if we're, if we're not using our current allocated CDBG to its highest and best use, I think that's fine. I don't think I would agree, or my observation is not that. If we're talking about getting grants out of the competitive pool of, of CDBG to do something like that, I think we should be doing that all the time. I would like to know kind of what the, you know, besides getting CDBG to fund onsite subsidy of, of affordable housing, I'd love to know an example of, of what that might be. But, but I would want that to either come out of the competitive pool, or else we're kind of acknowledging that maybe we're not using our CDBG to the best use that it could be used for. And, and I'd want to look into that pretty deeply before we were to do that, because I think we are using it to the best effect.
Thank you, I appreciate the feedback.
Others?
Can I chime in?
You bet.
Hey, so, heard Mr. Marriott, I, I think the first, the first one, waiving or reducing development fees, I think I just would like to understand what that really entails. I mean, I, I'm not sure I'm in alignment that, just because you waive it, at one, that it impacts and increases the cost to all the other developers. I, I don't think it's a weighted number like that. I, I believe everyone has a set, set dollar amount to pay out what those development fees are, and what they're for, right? So, I'd like to understand that a little bit more of how that could impact getting it, if, if, if there's no impacts to other developers who don't want to waive or reduce development fees and do market rate, fine. But I'd like to also hear the story and hear the understanding of those that are seeking that, what does that mean, and how do we govern, govern that? So, it is still fair and equitable, but still achieves the desired outcome that, that we're looking for. So, as far as the other ones, I, I, I do agree with Mr. Marriott and his comments around the rezoning, I'm, I'm a little cautious about that. I do like that you set some parameters around it that are interesting. So, you know, if, if there's some, you know, looking at it face value, it doesn't look too inviting, but maybe there's some details we don't understand in that bullet as much, when you talk about waiving zoning requirements, like, what does that really mean? You know, less trees, no islands in the parking lot? What is, what is that? You know what I mean? Because I know some of those are some of the requirements as well, and they could be as silly as those, waiving those and saving those dollars. And as far as the CDBG, yeah, I agree, we already kind of have it earmarked, I, I would really, I think for us to, you know, we have a plan, and we kind of use every dollar today of that, you know, we'd have to really have to have a deeper conversation around future strategies around that. But I, I would, I would rank them in the order you have them, of interest for me. You know, starting with the first one is probably the most interest, and second interest, and third, and, and instead of trying to, and through all these conversations, instead of trying to adjust all these dials and hope it does well, I'm always interested in adjusting one dial, and then see how does it work? How does it impact? Did it, did it get the outcome we desired? Because if we start dialing with too many things, we may not know what was successful and what wasn't successful. And we, and we may get ourselves confused around maybe some unforeseen consequences in, in our decision-making, as we adjusted too many dials. So, if I was to give any encouragement and, and thought, I would say, let's grab one, let's adjust it and see how it works on the first few. It's a slower process, but it's at least thoughtful, as we go through, to look for the desired outcomes. Thank you, Mayor.
Great feedback, thank you.
Others? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody, so let's move on to the next one.
So the, this next strategy is to allocate publicly-owned land, and/or acquire vacant or underutilized properties for affordable and mixed-income housing. But this is a strategy that the, that the city has used before, the Habitat for Humanity project at Fifty-second and Carr is a good example of how this can be done. It's worked out well in the case of Habitat, and something that we may want to look at for future projects. Again, this, we need to take a deeper look into the strategy, so that's going to take some time, we don't have, we, we need to just spend more time on this and flesh it out some more, before we come back to council with more thoughts. But at this point, you know, we're open to any feedback that you may want to share.
Mr. Marriott's got some feedback.
Yeah, so Carrie, didn't we have, whether it was DU, or CU, or one of the colleges, they did a study for us on our publicly-owned land that could be possibly appropriate for this? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, CU did.
Okay. And, and out of that, they identified how many parcels? Just a couple, right?
There, there were a handful, yes.
Okay. And, and we've even turned a couple of them already over to, one to Habitat for Humanity, and maybe one somewhere else, is that correct?
No, that was before my time. I'm not sure what exactly was, which properties were found in that study, I don't recall off the top of my head, if the city-owned land was part of that or not.
Okay. Gordon, do you remember?
Your recollection, Councilmember, Councilmember Marriott is right on. We did take the report from the Hometown Colorado Initiative, and then we've studied it, and then using kind of the same methodology, have built a GIS layer to identify other properties, too. So that was the seed, but we wanted to complete an entire inventory of properties, and then apply the criteria about whether or not they would be, you know, acceptable, and, and meet all the criteria for future development.
Okay. And this question says both to allocate publicly-owned land, or acquire land to turn over for affordable housing. If we were gonna acquire land, like they give here, you know, out-of-date public-sector offices, for instance, how, where would the money come? How would we, how would we do that? Where would we, where would we get the money to do that?
And that's something that we would have to determine, as we have those future discussions at this point, we haven't had those.
All right. Okay. That's all I have on that one.
Well, a perfect example of where we've, where we're doing this right now, is the old city shops, right there at Fifty-Eighth and Garrison, that the city is going to convey to Urban Renewal. Urban Renewal's going to assist in the cleanup of that site, and then turn it over to George Thorne, who's the potential developer for a, you know, for an attainable project. So, that's a perfect example.
Yeah. No, I, I remember that, and, and my, my question for here was, is like, this is something we're already doing.
Right.
Is this saying we need to do more of this? If we're gonna do more of this, where? Because my understanding was, we've identified those, and the most practical ones have been executed, so...
Certainly, you know, the one that was sited down on Fifty-second, that, you know, Dot Miller turned Habitat for Humanity onto, is another good example of, of doing that. So, so yes, obviously...
And to add to the conversation, I think there's, you know, at one point, when influx schools are talked about a lot, right? So, you know, closing some, you know, and, and moving some, and I like that you highlighted that, because I know from talking to the school board, it's not that anything is happening in the city, I'm not implying that, but if they ever had to close a school, what could be other uses for that property? And, and I know this popped up quite a bit.
Yeah. Well, and, and I believe the Pomona parcel, you know, that's an old-school site that never got built from way back in the seventies, you know? But I think we looked at all those that exist now, so maybe this is for other land that might exist in the future, or something, I don't know. But it seems to me that, you know, if, if we're talking about housing policy today, and strategies we're gonna implement, my only comments around this are, I believe we've already done this, unless there's some additional information here, but it, but it seems to me that, that, that we've already done this.
Well, I, I would agree, John. I, I do believe we did look at this, and actually, I don't think the Pomona parcel was one of the parcels that were looked at, John. I remember that from when we went over that study. But I guess my question would be, you know, I'm going back to this housing committee, Housing Advisory Committee, is this not something that we can task a housing advisory committee with, in terms of looking at these different ideas here, on how we can enable a greater affordability in housing? Something that, you know, is not taken solely by employees? And then the other thing is, I'm gonna go back to my income distribution. We have an increase, it was only a couple of percentage points, but we have an increase in the number of people that are making less than twenty-five thousand in our VADA. And again, I go back to the, you know, less than twenty, at the twenty-five thousand mark, we're talking about six hundred and twenty-five dollars in income, right? And, you know, grocery store workers, I think they, what, make about twenty-six thousand, something like that, twenty-seven? Isn't our, isn't our minimum wage fourteen dollars and some change? So, to me, it's not only an issue of housing, it's also an issue of our ratio of workers and to our housing. You know, to me, I look at this as an economic development as well. You know, how do we get jobs into the city where people can afford? You know, eventually, if we continue in the direction that we're going, you know, you're seeing the increase in the hundred thousand dollars and above income, right? And I'm looking at that hundred thousand dollars, and it says that a person could afford a two, a twenty-five-hundred-dollar rent. Well, I have experience that, for that amount of rent, you're not gonna be doing a heck of a lot of anything, other than paying rent. So, I think there's a lot of issues here that, you know, we really don't have information on. You know, what are, what's the average cost to live in our VADA, in, in addition to rent? You know? And, 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 you know, because we promote restaurants and, and bars and things like that? I don't know who these people are. They're either becoming very much in debt, which we don't want to see, I don't think, in our, our city, or, I mean, I just think this is a broader issue that I don't think we're gonna solve, sitting here saying yay or nay on different policies. We don't know anything of these policies right now, and it's my opinion, that's why we would have a housing advisory committee, to help us on these things. Because, you know, we already have some of these things working. We had a developer last week who came in and was trying to build affordable housing, and, and, you know, from the look on his face, I don't think he knew what he was doing, frankly. And is that not a role also for a housing advisory committee? To help, you know, a place where developers, developers who really want to build affordable housing can get help? You know? It's, it seems to me, it's such an onerous thing to get money for affordable housing, when it's a true crisis in not just our VADA, but all over the Denver area. So, I don't know. I mean, we can, we can continue down the line on all of these things, but do we have enough information on them to really make a decision at this point?
Nancy, I'm thinking the same thing, in terms of, I don't have enough information to, to thumb up or thumbs down on a lot of this. Anybody? Lauren, you've, you've turned on your light... Lauren, you've, you've turned on your light and turned it off a few times because others have gotten, maybe made your point or you've got some, you'd like to add?
I will just say that Mr. Marriott seems to be reading my mind over here because he keeps speaking up and like, what comes out of his mouth is what I was going to ask. And so I was like, oh shucks, there goes my button again. Mostly I, I was looking at, you know, what is the list of available properties and particularly to Bob's point with, with the school district, where's the pot of money? For instance, if a school were to become available or another site in the future, is that donated to us or do we acquire it? And so I was going to ask about the funding mechanisms, but then that got asked as well. So thank you, Mr. Marriott, because we're very simpatico tonight.
Well, and, and just to weigh in, I think it's just this particular one and many of these are just tools in the toolbox, you know, and, and they need to be better defined, but it, it is a tool that we are acting on. I don't think it's the one and done as, as some may imply. I think this is just something we need to keep in there as an option in which we pursue the outcome that we're looking for.
But, but the reality of, of tools in the toolbox is that if they're not used properly, they can do more harm than good. So we've got to figure that out too as part of the equation.
Yeah, I agree. There needs to be more context fixed around it, right? So I agree with that.
Yep. Okay, next.
So next is foreclosure eviction prevention program. And as we're looking at ensuring that we have a comprehensive housing strategy, not only do we need to consider developing new affordable housing units, but housing preservation and also just trying to keep people in their current units. We know that there's a shortage of affordable housing, so what we can do to keep people where they're currently at, if that's feasible, makes sense. And so with this tool, we would consider partnering with a local nonprofit to run this program for us. This work aligns quite closely with the Human Services Advisory Committee and could be something where if this was made a priority for the city, that we could work with the Advisory Committee on how to make this recommendation work. Again, more, more research needs to be done. We need to flesh this out. So not, you know, wanting an answer of yes or no on this, on this particular strategy, but just wanting to bring it to your attention as something that we are going to be focusing on as we work on the action plan. But if you have any feedback...
Lauren, Lauren has some. She gets, she gets first bite at it this time.
I get to go first, yay. Well, I, I actually love this one and I know many of our neighboring communities have this. In particular, I remember discussing with Mayor Adam Paul in Lakewood, their program a couple of years back. And so I, I definitely think this is extremely valuable. Perhaps it's the community table or another nonprofit that we partner with, but it's so important because so many people, it, it's just a small thing. You know, it's a singular rent payment or something like that. Or one thing that I would notice is maybe not just renting utilities, but perhaps a one-time, you know, usage loan. Like your car breaks down, you can't get to work, you lose your job, that's how you lose your house for so many people who live on the edge. So if it's possible to, you know, to fix that flat tire or to get the, the car fixed, that could be the difference maker between them as opposed to just paying a month's rent. So I, I encourage us to maybe look at some flexibilities in there because we might be able to address what caused the problem as opposed to just delaying what's happening by making a singular payment. And then either it's a, a one-time forgiven or there's also the possibility of loans where, you know, people could get a $500, $600 loan and then be able to pay it back before they're ever eligible for another emergency assistance loan. I know there's so many ways to do this and this would actually be, going back to the Housing Committee, another excellent idea, particularly with the mayor's suggestion of experts. There are people who are experts on this and this would be an exciting sort of position to carve out for somebody with that kind of experience in implementing these kinds of emergency programs.
This is reminding me way too much of my last candidate debate when I was running for reelection where it's like, wait, we're already doing some of these things. And, and the one that comes to mind is we contribute as a city and I'm very proud that we do this to the Metro Mayor's Flex Fund, which is exactly, you know, we're kicking in dollars as are many other cities in the region and they've gotten some private contributions as well to, to do rent assistance, to give security deposits, to, to cover some of those gaps. So, you know, yes, you know, we need to do more, but we, you know, I think we're trying to do some of the right things. And, and so that's, that's an example of one where we are already engaged in this. Mr. Marriott?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead Nancy, I'll go after you.
Well, I was just, thanks, John. I was just going to add that, you know, many churches have benevolence funds for that very reason. So, you know, there may be a number of organizations that we could, you know, partner with.
Yeah. And so the comment I was going to make was, is one, I believe we're doing this already and I think the Metro Mayors have really sorted it out and are, and are doing it well. You know, they've already invented the wheel. I don't know that we have any business going and inventing a new wheel, but the big question is where's the money going to come from? If we're going to hand out money to pay people's rent or pay for their broken down car or fix something, we already do is the essential home repairs program, but, you know, any of these issues that we're going to do, the money's got to come from somewhere. And, you know, we, you know, my look at it is here in the city, we're spending all the money already. And so if we're going to spend it on something else, we've got to stop doing something or do less of something. And so I, I think that's the, the conversation and that's the part I worry about a little bit about, you know, the makeup of any kind of a Housing Advisory Committee would be very, very important because it's very easy to have a committee where all the members, their main, their, their highest priority would be to be subsidizing people's housing or providing emergency assistance or, or any of that thing. But there's a whole lot of people in the city and it was why I go back to the survey responses about, you know, it was a small number of self-selected people with interest in this topic. And if you take it to the broader community about, would you like us to do less of this so that we can do more of that? The answer might very well be no. So I think we just have to be very careful how we tread on things like these because the key is the money. And if we had a lot of money and we're deciding how to split it up, I think it's a much easier conversation, but I don't, I don't know where we get the money for.
Actually...
John, John, I just want to add to what you just said because I think that, that's a good point. And I think that, you know, where you go to survey, you know, I agree with you that people who are in a lower socioeconomic level are going to have greater dissatisfaction overall than a higher socioeconomic level, right? Because obviously when you're in a higher socioeconomic level, you have more choice in where you can live and it really is about choice. But I think that it's very, we're, it's very easy to find those people. We have to go to where they are. We have to go to where the lower paying jobs are. And the thing that really strikes me is, I don't know if it was in this presentation or one of them, oh, I know, it was in the chambers, which by the way, I thought was a fantastic presentation that they gave this past Friday. But what they said in that meeting was, is that the average new teacher cannot afford a place to, to rent here. Again, I go back to, you know, you have to be making $49,999 to be paying 30% of your income is $1,250 a month. That's not happening in Arvada, right? So, I mean, new teachers, I, I don't know what their salaries are. They're probably like in the mid 30s, a 30,000, a 30,000 range or maybe even less. You know, we're, we're having, we're having kind of the same issues that the mountain towns had at one time, right? Where, you know, people could afford to live there, but just not the workers.
Well, they still have that issue. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. Actually, just going back to Mr. Marriott's point, one program I would point out is with the Denver Urban Renewal Authority, they have an emergency loans program that staggered. So some are 0% loan repayment, 0% interest loan repayment, but others are 0.5%, 1%, 2% based on the means and availability. So it, it's designed to be a self-sustaining program. And again, I think this is one option. This is why it requires further development. It, it's not that it's the only tool in the toolkit, it's just to help build up to provide more options to people. And I agree with you, it has to be a sustaining fund. We can't just be throwing taxpayer dollars out left and right, but I think it can be done as a self-sustaining fund because there are numerous cities that do this already.
And I just want to weigh in, I think the community table is already doing this when they acquired, I can't remember which organization, went under and they got a lot of the foundation money handed to them and, and they did rent assistance. And I'm not sure if our CDBG funds that we give them every year are restricted in any way. I don't, I don't think they are, but, you know, I think we're doing it and I just want to make sure council knows that the community table I think is doing it already, so.
Good. Okay, well, let's talk about linkage fees.
So moving on to linkage fees. Linkage fees and affordable housing impact fees are policy tools that generate revenues to support the creation of affordable housing by charging a fee on new development. The fee is charged as a way to meet the demand for housing caused by newly created jobs associated with this growth. The fees can be assessed on all new commercial development, including retail centers, industrial or manufacturing facilities and other commercial projects. The impact fees can also be assessed on new residential development as well. This is a, a strategy that, again, we are, we have not dived into at this point. So we're not, we're not proposing anything as of yet, but this is something that we'll be looking into to see if it is a good fit for Arvada.
Ms. Marriott?
So yeah, I'll give you a little feedback here. I would be completely against this. I think the examples of where it's used, says, where it's used says a lot about it already. Denver, Boulder, Lafayette, three of the least affordable places in the region. And I think these policies are proven to not increase housing affordability, they decrease housing affordability, they have the exact opposite effect. Now, I grant you, they do make some small number of people the equivalent of lottery winners who, who get, you know, their housing subsidized by others, but, but I think as a strategy, this is a, is a, is a terrible strategy. If our problem is, as Ms. Ford has said several times already, that, that it costs, you know, rent costs too much, that housing costs too much around here, taking policy actions that makes housing cost more is completely the wrong approach. And, and so I would, you know, people can talk about it all they want, but I would be completely opposed to this. I don't, I don't see any, any good that can come of this type of a thing at all. And particularly, you know, Arvada is very different from Boulder. Boulder has 100,000 people or something that come to Boulder each day to work. And so commercial development imposes some costs on the public infrastructure that the residents pay for and all those people coming in don't pay for themselves. But Arvada is completely the opposite. More people leave Arvada to work every day than come here to work every day. And adding an impact fee on industrial development, commercial development, office development, all of that would be completely counterproductive. What we'd like is to have more jobs, more opportunity for people to work here, so they're not leaving Arvada to, to, to go work. So, you know, I, I'm happy to, to look at all these and have a policy committee look and talk about all these, but if, if I had my way, I would wipe this one right off the, right off the, the appropriate list.
Right off the face of the earth.
Right off the face of the, my iPad, you know? This is, this is a terrible policy and I don't think it's worked anywhere and I, and I wouldn't advocate it for Arvada.
My, my, my concern about this one is that it becomes a disincentive for commercial, industrial, office development and, you know, those, and that's counterproductive because you want to have good paying jobs for people to have to be able to live in your community. So I would echo that, you know, even though I need a lot more information on a lot of these, I can tell for myself pretty early on that this one does not have a lot of appeal to me. Any others that want to comment on this before we move on? Not seeing any? Okay, let's leverage our existing resources.
Okay, so the, the final recommended strategy, and this is the strategy that received the highest support in the community survey, is leveraging existing resources to facilitate affordable housing development. And the purpose of this recommendation is to really inventory our current resources that we have that may be used for affordable housing. This would help improve efficiency and maximize the impact of our resources. Financial resources are very limited, so it's incredibly important to inventory what we have and determine how those resources could best be utilized to support our efforts. Two examples would be just looking at CDBG and private activity bonds. We could take a look at other financial resources as well, but just making sure that what we have is best utilized and also looking at additional resources that, that we could potentially apply for and looking at partnerships as well with CHAF and with the Department of Local Affairs and seeing what other potential partnerships we could make in order to bring in more funding.
Ms. Marriott?
Thank you. So this is one where if, if we were going to have a Housing Advisory Committee, this is what, in my view, they should be doing. I believe we already allocate all our private activity bonds to, is it both CHAF and to, used to be called the Jefferson County Housing Authority, now they're called Foothills Housings or something like that, is that correct?
Foothills Regional Housing.
Foothills Regional Housing. So the question is, are we, are we having the most impact with that limited amount of private activity bonds? I think we probably are, but, but I think that's always open to, to, to look at and whether, to me, whether our staff does that and makes presentation to us or presents us with a report that we can make decisions on or whether a group of citizens weigh in on it, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think this is what we should be doing. And then the same with CDBG, you know, we should be out, evaluating, are we doing the right thing with the existing CDBG that we get? Keeping in mind that if we allocate it differently, we're stopping doing something in favor of doing something different, but I think that's okay. And then I know CDBG has a competitive pool that I assume we're competitive in, in applying for and trying to, to, to get as much as we can, but if, if we had a citizen committee that helped us with that, I, I think that would be okay. So, you know, when I look at all these potential strategies, I, I don't see much, much hope of, of any of them and, and one of them is completely negative. But this is a place where, where, you know, maybe there is something to be done here and, and if we were going to have a, a Housing Advisory Committee, I would suggest that this be the core of their work right here.
Okay, others? I'll take it, my sense is that we've got more work to do. I've heard several times that we still need to flesh this out or we still need to, you know, study more of this and, and, you know, so I think that's clearly your own team, Mr. Devon, saying you've got more work to do in this regard. I think the direction from council is to continue moving in that direction. I think we need more information in terms of a housing committee and certainly what your recommendations would be and, and how would we make it be something that would be effective and useful for us.
Absolutely. What I, I did hear a couple of things that I believe the council wasn't interested in. I, I certainly got the impression that we weren't interested in a linkage fee as a local funding source from developers. The, the implementation of a foreclosure eviction prevention program, I think there might be some interest there, but, but just based within available resources, the resources that are available to us. The, while, while there aren't apparent, real apparent possibilities in the, in the allocation of publicly owned land, I, I definitely got the impression that if we have something out there that we're not aware of, that we should consider that. And then, and then where I think there's a lot of work to do is in the area of establishing a committee to implement any affordable housing action plan, where you want to, to see more information about that. especially in terms of the makeup of the committee, who would be on the committee and who they would represent. Did we get that approximately right?
Well, and then also what would be their scope of work?
Scope of work, right. So a charter, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah. So with that, I'd be happy to go back and work with Gordon and with Carrie. I want to thank Carrie for the presentation tonight.
Yes, thank you, Carrie.
And I want to thank the council for their feedback.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Bob, sorry.
Bob, you got to be quick on the draw with me.
I'm trying. I don't know what's going on tonight, but real quick, I just want to close with Carrie. You know, we do reference other communities in this presentation and we keep saying that we want more information. I, I think there's, just for edification for us to be, so that we're smart in the decisions around it. You know, there was some state that, well, Boulder and Denver are not affordable and so forth. But I'd like to know, if they're really practicing these strategies, what are, what is their per capita, they're gaining off these fees and, and doing different strategies, you know, compared to others? Because my, my, my gut is telling me that they are charging these fees or doing these activities. And it's not necessarily slowing down their development. It's, it's, you're still seeing stuff happen and they're still addressing this concern at the same time. So some, something's interesting here that within the formula, we're not seeing here. And, and I like to understand it because if that is truly the case and it's so affordable, it's supply and demand. If it's not affordable, I mean, like Boulder, if it's so expensive to live there, but yet they're still taking care of the affordable living and homelessness and some other issues, something's, something, and not, not that I want to be an expensive community, but something there in that formula just seems interesting to me that I, I need to understand. And do you think that's something you can maybe grab some per capita, you know, data points around, around that? So we have something more thoughtful around. I don't want us to say, quickly say no when we don't know the full story of why.
Sure. Definitely, I can do that.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry, Mayor, sorry, Mark.
No problem. Good.
Mark, if you don't mind, I'll weigh in real quick. Carrie, I just want to say thank you for indulging all my questions tonight. I didn't have any intention of putting you on the spot, but these are hard questions and really difficult things to do. And I think we should proceed cautiously with this. And I really appreciate all the work you went through to put this together and, and, and sit there and take these questions from us and, and all the work you'll continue to do going forward. So thank you again for that.
And I wouldn't use cautious, Carrie, I'd use thoughtful.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate all the feedback. It will help us as we move further down the path.
Very good. Does anybody need a break or we're good? Okay, Mr. Devon, let's keep rolling.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're going to have the presentation of the 2020 Strategic Plan Summary by Innovation Performance Manager Kelly Hartman.
And Kelly asked me if she could make her presentation from where she's seated because she's recently had knee surgery and I'm not going to subject her to standing at the podium, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, and good evening, members of city council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an overview of the progress made towards the completion of your strategic results. We are all very aware that 2020 was a challenging year as we navigated COVID-19. Team priorities shifted as we adjusted to providing services in new ways. As a result, progress on many strategic results and associated milestones were impacted. As we review each strategic result by work system, I will be highlighting areas in which our teams are requesting additional time or direction from your, for your consideration. Members of the leadership team are joining us via Zoom to answer any detailed questions that may arise as we move through the presentation. Next slide, please. This slide, I just want to point out, at the bottom is the legend. So you'll see our green arrows up mean that our strategic results and milestones are on track. Yellow, they're in a cautionary stage. Black means there is no target established. That may, may be that they're down the road a little bit and we haven't gotten to a target yet. Red means that they are off track or off target. A blue circle means that there's no data available at this point. And then a blue checkmark means that they have been complete. Next slide, please. So the first work system that we're going to cover is our safe community. Next slide, please. So with regard to public safety staffing levels, the police department achieved the strategic result last year and is currently staffed above the 95% goal. 2020 was also a challenging year for public safety teams across the United States. And the team will be monitoring the size of candidate pools and expanding the Built Blue recruitment campaign in 2021. Next slide, please. The second strategic result focuses on community engagement and education provided by sector commanders. The command staff is requesting to extend the end date of this strategic result to the end of March of this year. The education plan is nearly complete and commanders are currently putting the final touches on their individualized sector engagement strategies. And I will say again, please interrupt me at any point if you have questions. Yes, Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. First of all, I love the way you do strategic planning and I think this is fantastic.
Thank you very much.
One quick question.
Sure.
Brought this up earlier with Mr. Devon and Ms. Gillis, but when we have, I promise I won't have questions on every slide. I, I purposely did not ask one question in the last presentation, by the way, because I knew I had a couple here. So instead of having the caution, going forward, instead of having caution and blue getting there, is it possible to have a, maybe a percentage dial? I know we've changed that on some of the budget things, but it would be really cool, like, just even in this first example, when we say PD is looking for an extension to March of 2021, is it started, is it not? Are we about 40%? Are we just not something we thought about, that kind of thing? So I just wondered if, if in the future, as we're looking down and reading, and I did read the detail to see if there was some information there, but I think that would be helpful for me just to say, all right, you know what, we're about 70% there. We probably need to move out to March or haven't even started yet.
Great feedback, and actually, our software does allow for us to do a percent complete, so we can do that for you in the future.
Thank you.
Sure.
Because caution, you know, having a caution designation makes it sound like it might be worse than it really is. Yeah, negative.
Good feedback, thank you very much.
Kelly, I have a couple of questions on this slide. The 191 officers, is that currently? Because I've heard that we were having a few leaving. Does that include what we have right at this moment?
This information was updated as of two weeks ago. And when I talked to Chief Link Straight, he said there were a little bit of fluctuation, but at that point, two weeks ago, they were above that 95% goal.
And then I had, I actually have two questions that may not be able to be answered tonight, but I would love to hear an answer to them. One is, are the police planning to do any kind of public relations in terms of this issue of the quasi-military organizational structure that seems to not align with the preferences of many of today's job applicants? So that's one question. And then the other question that I have is, down at the bottom where it says to create a comprehensive growth strategy based on population growth and crime patterns to determine officer per 1,000 ratio. What I'd like to know is, and, and this kind of goes back to a question I've been asking for a long time as well. Is there a tipping point when it comes to growth in terms of the officer per ratio, per 1,000 ratio number? So at what point in the growth cycle do we find that we need more officers per 1,000 ratio? That's another question that you may not be able to answer now, but I'd love to hear an answer to that.
Those are both really good questions and I would refer, like to refer both of those questions to, to Chief Link Straight or his deputy chiefs to answer. So we will get that information back to you, Nancy.
Thanks, Kelly.
Sure. Okay, so next, we are going to move on. Let's go ahead. Perfect. This strategic result talks about safety in Arvada. And as we know, safety is the highest priority of our citizens as documented in every community survey that we endorse. The city reports crime data to the FBI each year and reports from the FBI always are a year or more behind the current date. And so it takes a little bit of time to get that data back from the FBI. So data provided in 2019 shows that Arvada had the second lowest violent crime rate when compared to other cities in Colorado with a population of 100,000 or more. We do want to pay a little bit of attention to a milestone which talks about traffic. Let me get to it. It's the second milestone, which reads by 12/21, Arvada will have a traffic accident rate lower than the national average. I've had a lot of conversations with both PD and our traffic engineers and they would like to modify this milestone focusing on traffic accident rates. Their thought is comparing our rates in Arvada with national averages does not provide them, our teams, with the, with useful data. So they are requesting that they take some time to modify this milestone and bring back language for you to review and consider changing with this strategic result.
Mr. Marriott?
Yeah. Kelly, thank you for that. I, I, I agree with that completely. I think national average doesn't mean much and we really need to be comparing ourselves to similar communities, similarly situated, and similarly the way we work, you know. So comparing us to an East Coast community that may be much denser, tighter packed together is a very different driving situation than here and same with more rural communities. So I, I agree, I think this ought to be, ought to be looked at probably and honed in somewhat to be useful for us. So thanks for doing that. I've always thought this one was kind of not maybe quite right, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could we also just make sure that it would be a nice point to, to still have the national average there, but maybe not be on the goal? You know, what, how do we, how do we compare to similar communities, the state of Colorado and the nation?
Yes, and we can look at that. I think one of the challenges we see with the national averages, they tend to look at accident fatalities and severe injuries and that's the data that they, they report on a national level. And so our traffic engineering plus our public safety personnel really wanted to take a deeper dive into that information and to really look at intersections where accidents are happening, signal timing, other factors to make sure that we're really using data that will drive decisions in the future of how we manage traffic flow and different areas within our safe streets. So yes, Mr. Pfeiffer, we can certainly continue to include that information as far as those national averages within the strategic result.
Well, I think, I just, my concern that throws a little flag on it is not knowing the data sources in which you're going to come for the, to find your, your traffic accident rate lower than. I don't understand what you're comparing to and what data are you bringing to compare yourself to. So I think more, more information would be needed because at least with the national average, we, we know what the data you're comparing to. What I'm hearing here is you're wanting to change it to unknown data sources at this point or at this time that will derive a rate. So just as long as we understand what data you used, why you used it and how you got there, it will be informative for us to know that that is an appropriate goal in, in this, in this particular one. Because the end result is we'd want the traffic accidents to go down. But I don't want, I mean, let's just be honest that, the way I look at it is whatever data you get could be manipulated to, to favor the outcome of the information you want to share. So I want to make sure we understand what you're comparing yourself to and what is the objective data being used, so.
Yes, thank you very much for that feedback. And that's something that we really strive for is, any data that we enter into our performance management system has to have a source and that source must be verifiable. And so we will continue with that model as we put this milestone in place.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you for that information.
Sure. All right, next slide, please. So we have two strategic results that have to do with juveniles in the court system. And the first one talks about probation and our measurable risk-based pre-sentence assessments. And that's, that's a mouthful. And the second one has to do with recidivism within Arvada courts. And 2020 was a really challenging year for our municipal courts. They really had to focus on getting defendants' access to court services. We had some personnel changes within our probation office. And the team really wanted to let you know that they are dedicated to both strategic results and will be working diligently in 2021 to get back on track with both strategic results. And so we, they really want to see that progress move forward this year. So we'll start to see some of those arrows that are now pointing down in that green category. So next slide, please.
Kelly, could I make a comment?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to share with the council, I, I know you listen to Kelly and I probably don't need to do this, but I want to assure the council that our new municipal court judge is definitely interested in these performance measures. She's assured Rachel and I both in terms of our discussions with her that she's definitely dedicated to this and we're going to support her in terms of working with her to achieve those, those performance measures.
Well, I'd like to get some, you know, you know, she and I have talked some and I think we need to talk as a group, are these the right measures from, from her perspective? And, and, you know, with the new judge comes new ideas and new input as to how to do this right. You know, we're, you know, although I've represented a few defendants in my career, I don't purport to be an expert on what's, that's the way to have a, have a criminal justice system, so. So I think she should be involved in, in that process.
Next slide, please. So again, this is the strategic result about recidivism for juveniles within the Arvada court system. Again, you see those same patterns and trends with being off track and again, dedicated to getting these back on track in 2021. Next slide, please. So with that, we're going to move into our next work system, which is infrastructure. Next slide, please. So council members are acutely aware of the challenges facing work on the Jefferson Parkway. And as a result, I won't spend additional time talking about this strategic result.
Don't rub it in.
Next slide, please.
I did want to make one comment on that, Kelly.
Sure.
I think a lot of people are curious as to whether or not COVID is affecting or will affect transportation. So I think overall, it may be smart for us to look at, you know, our traffic patterns, not, not from 2020 to identify, but going forward, you know, our, our needs may change. So I, I hope that it's somewhere in our evaluation of where we should be putting funds that we're going to be keeping that in mind.
Thank you for that feedback. All right. The next strategic result talks about the completion and implementation of our street maintenance master plan. And that work did not get completed as planned in 2020. The team is currently in the midst of data collection and analysis and the team is requesting the end date of this strategic result be extended to December of this year. The team is excited about the ability to implement a holistic approach to street maintenance. And for Ms. Miller, I would say that the team is around 70 to 75% complete. Next slide, please. 2020 also provided us with new opportunities to work remotely. And as a result, the target for completing a comprehensive study on the usage of City Hall campus is in the cautionary status. The team is requesting to extend the date of this strategic result end to December of 2022. More analysis is required to understand the best use of city facilities. Are there any questions on this strategic result?
Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, you know, Kelly, on this one, I would, I, I'm fine with extending the date to 12 of 2022, but I, I would say that may not be long enough, you know, that we're going to spend it. That we're going to spend at least 50% of 2021 without city facilities even being open. And then, you know, once they begin opening here in the middle of 2021, I suspect that things will be different within certain work systems and may yield very different needs that may take a while to figure out. And this one particularly because the changes to the City Hall campus are expensive changes, that I wouldn't be in any big hurry to be on this one. I suspect that the outcome of COVID will be that there are fewer people working in City Hall, not more. And so the criticality of providing adequate facilities is probably not there at this point. So, you know, I'm fine with temporarily moving the date out, but I would move it even further. I think we have a lot to learn here, and it's going to take a long time for anything to go back to whatever normal might be after COVID.
Thank you for that feedback, and I will take that information back to the owner of this strategic result. And I will recommend that they extend that end date out a little bit further just to make sure we have adequate time to really reflect on the resources that we have and the space that we need. Next slide, please. Teams are on track with updating the water, sewer, stormwater, and overall infrastructure master plans. So as you can see, this is on track and moving forward at the correct pace. Next slide, please. Utility teams received an update schedule from Denver Water, and as a result, the team is requesting to extend the end date for the 100% water supply strategic result to December 2025, with the option to reassess at that point. Meanwhile, the city continues to maintain funding and is monitoring the Denver Water Participation Contract Requirements. And again, as Mr. Marriott stated in the earlier strategic result, this end date may need to be extended out as well past that 2025 date.
A lot of that's the whole gross reservoir discussion.
Correct.
Seems like this is a strategic result that's really not in our hands, that we have little to maybe even no ability to impact when this can be done. So I think it's good that we're on it and paying attention to it, but certainly I don't look at the red arrow pointing downward as reflective of our inability to get our work done. I think this is out of our hands.
Yes, that's correct. Next slide.
Kelly, on this one, excuse me, I just wanted to identify the key factor of water conservation, and it would be nice, you know, where it identifies the importance of water conservation being solidified in the 2019 community service, a survey, excuse me. It would be nice, I think, to have some, somewhere in the planning to engage the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee on this as part of, to actually have it in, you know, to have a partnership identified somewhere in the strategic plan with our committee as well, since we have an advisory committee on sustainability.
So Ms. Ford, are you recommending that we look at potentially adding a milestone that would have language talking about the Sustainability Advisory Committee and their relationship with this strategic result?
Yes, Kelly, well put. Thanks.
You're welcome, thank you. Next slide, please. Another strategic result that we're very familiar with is the voter-approved bond funds. The funds continue to be expended as required, and work on the two street projects continues as planned. Next slide, please. City teams are also on track to complete updates on engineering standards and the city code. So that work continues and is on track. Next slide, please. Now we'll move into community and economic development. Next slide. The first strategic result, the team noted that no comprehensive plan amendments were requested by a developer during 2020, hence exceeding the 95% target of the strategic result focused on development approvals conforming with the comprehensive plan. And that encompassed a total of 119 cases in 2020. Next slide, please.
Kelly, I just want to make one comment on this slide. There was a statement that kind of struck me, and that's under significance, where it says, "We know that most development projects conform to the community's vision of development as defined by the Land Development Code." And I would like to think that all of our development projects conform to the community's vision of development as defined by the Land Development Code. Because I would question with the ones that don't, because it says most, why not?
Thank you for that feedback. That's a great catch, Ms. Ford, thank you very much. All right, next slide, please. The CED team also launched the Development Customer Survey in 2020. And as of quarter four of 2020, 29% of respondents rated the review process as good or excellent. This leaves some room for improvement, so the team will be working on training and reviewing processes in 2021 to influence the rating. And before Mr. Marriott asks, there were 33 respondents to this survey. Next slide, please. CED also launched a community-focused economic development survey in 2020, capturing the opinion of more than 500 individuals. 83% of respondents responded that it is important for Arvada to achieve economic growth in the future. The team will use this information along with other feedback to create a work plan. So they are on track with this strategic result.
Kelly, on this slide here, it talks about the survey results were anticipated to be provided to the team by February 2021. When will, do you know when they'll be presented to us?
I will double-check with Mr. Stachowski, and we'll get that information back to you, Nancy.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Next slide, please. All right, now we're moving on to vibrant communities and neighborhoods. Next slide. City teams continue to support neighborhood projects and initiatives through grant funding and report being on track with this strategic result focused on activating shared neighborhood spaces. Next slide, please.
I had a question on this one, too. Let's see. No, it's on this one, never mind, this slide here. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, it was on that slide. I had two questions. Is there a limit to the neighborhoods that can receive grant funding?
Could you, is there a limit?
In other words, it seems to me that a lot of times it's the same neighborhoods that receive funding. And I guess maybe I should ask, my second question was, is, what do we have in place to increase participation so that we're expanding the number of neighborhoods that actually do increase funding there for reshaping their neighborhood spaces?
So I'm going to reach out to Gordon to see if he's on Zoom, if he would like to answer that question.
Councilmember Ford, it's an ongoing process. So we have some neighborhoods who are very well organized and have submitted projects requesting grant funding. And we look at those as a standalone project. Is it a good idea, and is the neighborhood organized to undertake it? At the same time, our Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator is really active in building the number of neighborhoods that are active, that are organized, that are ready to make the application for their first grant. And so the attempt is to not penalize someone who's already active and submitting different projects. But the focus is really on getting all neighborhoods to a place where through their neighborhood leadership, they're at a place where they can apply also.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks, Gordon.
Next slide, please. This strategic result focuses on strategic investments and initiatives to ensure amenities are aligned with our community, is noted to be in a cautionary status as the majority of the milestones associated with this strategic result fell into cautionary status because of challenges faced in 2020. And this one, I am not going to guess a percent complete. But when you look at the milestones having to do with committee events planning, our Myers Pool, centralized volunteer coordination program, and policy and standards about Old Town, you know, those were all things that were kind of put on hold during 2020. So this team will be moving forward in 2021.
I have a couple of questions on this one, too, Kelly.
Sure.
First of all, under the analysis where it lists the, let's see, I believe these were, yeah, these are, what were the actions that were taken from the Hometown Colorado Initiative? And this goes back, this goes back to the questions that were asked in the previous presentation when it came especially to the plan that looked at the open parcels and whether or not they were possible for affordable housing. The other thing that I want to add in here, too, is that the March 2014 report on the Pomona Parcel, "A Place of Adventure and Discovery," is now, what, five years, or six years, seven years old? Wow, seven years old. And, you know, this is a topic that's come up a number of times in the past six years that I've been on council. I've been hearing a lot from my constituents. We did a report, we spent money on that survey. The constituents said, the residents said what they wanted on that parcel. In, from that time, we've had people who are interested, citizens who are interested in creating more activities, and, you know, the talk of the dog park. So the question that I want to bring up is, is how long do we want to hostage, put this property as a hostage property that nothing can be done because it's underdeveloped? And there are people that have lots of great ideas for activities that could actually create usage of this property? You know, whether it's a community gardens, maybe some more bicycle jumps. And we, I think that we can get citizens to actively participate in this as well. So I would hate to see this property remain hostage forever and ever and ever for the chance that it may be developed in the future, which is not what the citizens want. And, you know, when are we going to make a decision on this?
I'm going to refer both the Hometown Colorado question and all questions related to hostages to Gordon.
Wise move, Kelly.
Councilmember Ford, we referenced the Hometown Colorado study, and in the analysis section, it talks about the 11 sites that were identified as part of that. We've supplemented that list, as was mentioned, with other sites, too. And we're looking at it through the lens of, are they appropriate for affordable housing projects? And would they help us meet a neighborhood park need if we were able to acquire the property? So we've referred to that as a Strategic Land Pursuit and Acquisition Plan. And we're just wrapping up work on the mapping part and the application of the criteria. So that's kind of an update of that part. And then we did complete the Pomona Parcel Study, and it was much discussed at the time, and it went to the city council for discussion also. And I know there'll be other conversation about this, but the direction that we've been operating under is that we have not established a direction or a purpose for the property. And it is, we are not acting on, at this time, any ideas or suggestions of how it might be used.
I'm not in agreement with it, Gordon, but at least you answered my question. Thanks.
Next slide, please. Work on the history master plan also falls into the caution status for the same reason. Teams will be working on preparing a complete list of historical assets and interpreting the telling of Arvada's history in 2021. Next slide, please.
Before you move, I have another comment on this. So as I read this through this page, it talked about all the things that need to be done, but one thing it didn't talk about is how are we going to establish who is going to do that work? Because I know that the Historic Society members will be absolutely offended if they are not a part of doing this actual work. And so I feel like we're, we've not really identified the key players that need to be involved in doing this work. And I would like to see that on here somewhere, as to who are those key players.
And Nancy, I feel that some of that is addressed in the second milestone, which reads, "By 12/21, develop a collaborative system between the Chamber, Visitor Center, Historical Society, and the city." And so I know during, yeah, during our retreat.
I missed that, thank you.
Sure, no problem.
I think that that needs to be done first, though, I think, before we do anything about making lists or anything like that.
Thank you for the feedback.
Lauren.
Thank you. Just in line with that, as we look at this, I just want to strongly encourage that we make sure it's a really, to Nancy's point, just a broad group, making sure, you know, we look at indigenous history and anything else that might be representative, particularly with DEI being such a focus in the national and state and local conversation right now. So just making sure we have all those broad voices at the table, as Mr. Marriott likes to say, the diversity of thought. Strongly encourage the diversity of thought from all perspectives.
That's called the DOT Committee. Diversity of Thought.
I like that.
Kelly, quick question here. You're just giving us update on strategic plans we already have, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so just maybe for my peers, you know, these have been established, and all Kelly's doing is giving us, are we achieving it or not, right? So we're not, we will have further discussion later this year when we have a strategic meeting, right? You're just giving us preparation for that strategy meeting in May, whenever we get together.
That's correct. So this is to help understand where we are with the current strategic results. So as we move into the next strategic planning retreat that's going to be held in May, we know where we are currently with this strategic plan, and that'll give you the opportunity to propose additional ideas as we move forward.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was following. And as Marriott would say, you can cautiously proceed. Oh, come on, Marriott. Didn't hear a chuckle out of him.
I get credit for a lot of stuff these days.
We coin all your words.
Next.
And you get quoted quite a bit, too, John.
Next.
And with that, we have waste hauling, which is.
Next.
Didn't I say you can cautiously proceed?
We will cautiously proceed to the next slide. We all are pretty aware of where we're at with waste hauling and that we're on track. Next slide, please. This is something we talked about a lot tonight as well, which is the attainable for quality housing affordable for a broad range of income levels. So I like the fact that we talked about that we needed to have more conversation with council, and I think that did occur tonight, and yet we will have additional conversation down the road. So with that, we'll go ahead and go on to the next slide, please. We'll be moving into the Organizational and Service Effectiveness Work System, which will be our last work system for the night. Next slide. The communications team is working on the development of a city marketing plan and is requesting to extend the end date of this strategic result to December of 2021. Again, this plan is, they are working on this, they have a percent of it complete, but the communications team was kind of busy in 2020, working on everything related to COVID, and so that is why they're asking for a little bit of extra time to make sure that they are able to put this comprehensive plan together and in place.
On this, one of the discussion points is our key partners, and certainly the Visitor Center is one of those in this arena. Mr. Devon, will you be giving us an update of your recent meeting with the Visitor Center folks in terms of their ask and some discussion we've had on that topic?
Yes. We're actually meeting with them this week. We couldn't meet with them last week, it had to get canceled, but yes, we will give you an update.
Very good.
Next slide, please. So many members of city council tuned into a meeting today with our teams with Smart City initiatives, and we've been working diligently on this strategic result. The team is researching transitioning from a planned concept to a program dedicated to smart city work, which will provide a pathway to move ideas forward for prioritization and funding. And as you know, the team is also working with data governance consultants, which will assist the team in the creation of boundaries and standards citywide. The team is requesting to revisit this strategic result during the city council retreat in May. Again, they really want to kind of revision this strategic result and get a lot of feedback from you as council members on the direction we need to move going forward. Next slide, please.
I would, I'd like to give some direction right now, because I'm getting very frustrated by the fact that I cannot use my phone in Arvada in many areas. There is no reception. And I love the idea of a smart city, but frankly, when we can't even communicate well, I think there's a problem. And somehow, we need to address this problem. I mean, I'm talking about in the commercial areas, like right around 80th and 77th Avenue, and all that area, I get no reception. And I have Verizon. So I would love to see our smart city, you know, all these things are great initiatives, but when we don't even have the basics yet, you know, we're a major city, and I don't know if anybody else has trouble with their cellphone, but I can't even talk in the phone half the time because there's just no, the whole reception to the east is terrible. I don't know if it's bad other ways, other areas, but it's just, when I read this, I kind of laugh, I think to myself, man, we don't even have good reception yet, and we're talking about a smart city.
Again, very much appreciate that feedback, and I will forward that on to Mr. Foley. Okay, next slide, please. So work is continuing to address opportunities for improvement noted in our feedback report from Rocky Mountain Performance Excellence. Teams are working to finalize the organizational profile, which is the foundational work for a Baldridge application, and we do plan to submit an application in the spring of 2022. Next slide, please. The city has a longstanding history of performing community surveys. As we move forward in 2021, teams will be working on shifting to an outcome-based survey platform, and will begin the process of selecting a new survey vendor. Moving in this direction will require additional feedback from council to modify this strategic result as we move forward. So again, we would like to spend some time during the retreat in May discussing this strategic result. Next slide, please. We're almost there. We've got a couple more. Work is on track for the launch of a citywide resilience collaborative for sharing resources, building partnerships, and ensuring community ownership of meeting identified resilience targets. The team was not able to complete the milestone associated with this strategic result and is requesting to extend the end date to December of 2021. The last strategic result? Next slide. This strategic result focused on recovery principles related to COVID-19. We continue to offer city services in a timely and effective manner while being committed to the health, safety, and well-being of our teams and the community. Next slide. Next slide. So with that, any additional questions that we have not addressed in this presentation?
Anybody have anything? Good work, Kelly. Lots of good information, obviously. Work yet to be done. There's always work yet to be done. But this is good information as we start to move into our discussions that we'll be having in May. So thank you very much. Mr. Devon, anything else you need from us?
Sorry. No, Mr. Mayor and council, we're good.
Very good. We stand adjourned.